All right, want to call this meeting to order? You all set, William? Good man. Is there any agenda additions or violations? Anybody have anything? Hearing none. Approval of the minutes of March twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second?
All right, is there any corrections? Anybody see anything? All right, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll move right down to highway. Road Commissioner's report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have John Colley. Alpine Construction here to speak. If you have any questions and answers for the cover bridge. And like the east Albany.
Oh, yes.
All right, so you want to give us a brief report and if we have questions?
Sure, uh, we, uh, we're looking to start, uh, really May. I think the bridge closure date is May fifteenth. In order to do the rehab, we, uh, and what a lot of the permitting has been going on since, uh, since the award is we need to build a bridge, a steel bridge, under the wood bridge. And then the steel bridge, uh, will support, uh, the truss. And then, you know, the rehab is select, you know, because they want to preserve as much as possible. So we support it everywhere and then that allows us to take this one out or that one out and, uh, and then replace it. There's a lot of work on the bottom, bottom cord. So it's a lattice, so you guys are familiar with that. So then I think most of the bottom, bottom cord gets replaced. So we'll, we'll see the steel bridge will be there and then we'll have a series of shoring towers that sit on top of that, that will support the bridge from the top cord. And then that allows to do whatever we want at that point. We don't remove the floor. I think only ten feet of the floor gets replaced, uh, not the whole floor. So that's a thing that I'll bring up with the, uh, the resident. And when I was under there a couple of weeks ago, um, you could see that it was, you know, there was really wet marks on it, on the travel lane. So like, you know, if that was replaced, I think we were out talking to the neighbor there last week, um, that, uh, the rehab was in eighty-five, the last rehab. So the idea that that's going to last thirty-five years, I'm not sure. So I will bring that up with the state. They'll have to weigh in on it, um, whether or not they want to replace that as well.
If you, of course, if you put steel underneath, I would assume I-beam type.
Yeah.
Construction. And then, um, do you pick the whole bridge up and move it or do you bring it in sections?
Nope, it stays right in place. Everything, everything will happen right there. So if you can visualize it, there'll be, there'll be a, a platform that will build underneath and it'll have needle beams every five feet that are about thirty-five feet long. And, uh, so that will extend beyond the outside of the bridge. So that we, and then we'll put a work platform on there so you'll be able to walk all around it.
Right, yeah.
And then the shoring towers will be supported on those needle beams at five feet. So everything will happen right there. Nothing gets moved. Now, we do have to, it has to be recambered. So the way we recamber it is we just jack it up, uh, some distance. This, we're thinking maybe it's a foot and a half. Other styles of bridge, you could get, you know, we've had them where they're two, three feet out, you know, like this. So you got to get it way up and then you'd lower it down on, uh, blocking, again, onto the, the needle beams and we get the, the camber that we want into it. And once we have the camber in that we want, then we put the secondary shoring in, which are these towers, and we support it from above. That'll hold the camber on the, on the top cord while we replace the bottom cord. Once the bottom cord is replaced, then, uh, that will hold the camber of the bridge while we replace the upper cords. There's not as many upper cords as there is. The bottom cord is almost.
And so when you set that bridge back down on a steel, is there a way to protect that wood when it's rainy or snowy? You know, and vehicles going over there, the, the water's going to drip down on, onto that wood, which is then sitting on the steel? You understand?
I don't, uh, well, the, the, the actual wood part of the bridge won't be sitting on the steel. It'll be hard blocked.
I see.
There'll be hard blocking, you know, every ten feet or so. Uh, it's be coordinated with the shoring tower. So wherever those are, they'll, we'll put in cribbing from the steel to the underside of the, of the bridge, uh, the wood on the, so one, the, the, the timber from the bridge won't touch the steel. It'll be wood to wood.
But you'll be able to see the steel?
When you drive by, you'll be able to.
Steel, the steel's temporary.
Yeah, steel's only temporary.
I was going to say, steel comes out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I didn't understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it'll be, you know, that's what, you know, when they came, and I know you guys had talked about this. We, we had put something in and said, hey, you know, the schedule's not realistic. You know, because it's going to take us two months to get the steel bridge in and a month to take it out.
Sure.
You know? So the idea we're going to do that and then do the rehab in three months wasn't.
Has the state ever considered leaving some of that so that thirty-five years down the road, at least some of the prep works done?
No, no, it's always, no, we've always, it's always in and out.
Take it right back out, yeah?
Take it all out.
Interesting.
Test the historic.
We did one, we did one in New Hampshire that was a little bit different where, um, hidden underneath the wood bridge were the steel beams.
Well, and that's what I wondered. I wondered if they would leave some of it hidden so that they, at least it was prepped for thirty-five years from now. When it needs to be done again.
I did not understand that you had it.
Yeah, that comes, that comes right back out, right.
Who determines if it's ratted enough to change, uh, to, or?
You know, what'll happen is, uh, when we start, we'll, we'll, our superintendent will go with the resident and then they'll go around and they'll inspect it and they'll look at and say, because they'll look at all the different timbers and say, okay, this needs replaced, this needs replaced. And they'll identify everything. In the contract, the way the contract is set up is they've already identified some. So let's say they've identified fifteen that are bad. But then in the contract, they have an allowance for another fifteen. So we're, they'll go out and they'll find, they're going to consume all the extras. You know, if they have, we've identified fifteen and we want you to buy fifteen extra, they're going to use the other fifteen. You know, because they're, you know, part of the problem with the camber of that bridge is there's so, so many splices in it. You know what I mean? And so with all those splices, the cord can be good, but you know, there's going to be give in the, in the lattices, which that's, you know, that affects its ability to hold a camber.
When I was, uh, I made that, and so when I did that, I had crawled underneath the bridge and took pictures and stuff. And I did notice that some of those real big timbers that are laying on that concrete, um.
They're in bad shape.
Yes, they are.
Yes. They all get replaced.
Okay.
They get replaced and everything that touches the concrete is pressure treated. Right, that, that, that's pressure treated. The deck, even though we're only doing ten feet, that ten feet of deck is pressure treated. I think the curb, and I want to say that, the curb might be, but I'm not positive. And then the, the actual surface, the driving surface is oak. So that won't be pressure treated, but it's, you know, oak is, you know, that's where you want it.
I know the real reason you wanted to have this was the traffic pattern. So is there any further conversation you want to have regarding that tonight? I mean.
We're, after meeting itself, they, there's no room. It's all bottlenecked. Where there's staging for the cranes, for parking, for employees.
Yep.
And whatnot. Um, if we, my, my thought is, and I kept John, he was okay with it, um, is closing Gorge Road. The reason being, you have a line of cars, you have a line of staging of supplies or anything on that side of the road that's going to turn into a one traffic, one lane road. You're going down.
A mess.
Yeah, issues, the way they come through there, even though it's stop signs. It doesn't matter.
So do we have to go back to the state to alter the traffic plan at this point? Or do the, are they good with us just closing it?
I, I would bring that up. We have, we're got to get the pre-construction meeting in. There's two things. Uh, we're, when you look at our traffic plan, there's a base of traffic signs and information that we have to put out. You guys are responsible for the detour. So I think that falls into, the closure of the road would then fall into how you're handling the detour. That's the way I would present it to the state guy. And you know, the, frankly, the best way to do it is to let me get through the pre-construction meeting.
Okay.
Because everybody's there. And then once we get established on site, which we're hoping to be around May first, we did get approved for that location, so we're over by the airport. Put the resident in here. Then we're just dealing directly with him and it becomes much easier.
It becomes much easier.
Yes.
So I think what you were looking for is a poll of the board tonight and I don't know what.
Just to keep it on the local level here.
As one person, I would say, with hearing the recommendation of the engineer, hearing you, you know, hearing the construction company, I say we move ahead with closure if that's the best way to go. So that's just one person.
I had talked, I went, actually went with John because he had visited Chris at the airport. So I went with him that day and I asked, I said, told Chris about it and he didn't have no problem with it. As long as they could have emergency lane. So we'll have a.
To that gate that goes by the retaining wall?
Yeah, from, actually each end.
Okay.
Of Gorge Road.
So we got to keep one lane plowed in the winter time then?
No. Wow. I was thought of.
Well, if it's only down to the, you only got to, you know, clear to the turnaround.
From both ends, you got to keep one lane plowed.
At least to the runway.
From both sides.
Well, the only problem.
Well, he didn't say, he just said, if you got to close it, close it. He didn't give no discretion.
The only, yeah, because they put in a, an access road above.
Actually, we can, we can maintain that to that section if need be. To that gate for the airport runway, which is down runway.
What a lot of people don't understand is up on top where that big wall that they built looks like for Ticonderoga, there's, there is an access up there.
That's the gate I'm talking about.
Yeah, that, not the one that's off of Gorge Road. I'm talking about the one that up.
Up above.
Yeah, where the, what was the warehouse was there or something a long time ago?
If I, if I could, I, I would also say that if, you know, that approach is something that you guys are open to, that's good for us too because, and for you, I think, because right now the plan is to stuff everything through the other side. So all the wood, everything will come through the other side.
Through the, the east street side?
Yes, and that's all gravel roads and everything. So, you know, everything that gets delivered was going to be coming through there. If we, if we switch that around, then everybody is coming down, you know, from Airport Road and then we're stopping just be, just beyond the one house that's there.
You're all tar road basically to that side.
Yeah, so it'd be less impact wear and tear on the road.
Actually, that section is tar all the way.
Yeah, there's a driveway entrance that goes into the old mill there.
Yes.
And how are you guys planning to work around that?
That'll just, if somebody needs to get in there, we'll just have to, the road gets closed at the, at the front, at the intersection. But, uh, we've done it before where if people need to get through, you know, that is always left open and, you know, we'll just have to work, stage everything around that.
Have you guys been in contact with Evans?
With Ms. Chase, Ms. Chase Manson. That's, that's not how you pronounce her name, but it's close. And she said she's willing to work whatever. And John said that they'll have to leave her driveway somewhat open so she has access and an out.
That's Ron Evans?
No.
You're talking about the house on the corner?
The other house, the one right on the corner.
By Jerry.
Yeah.
Uh, LaFrances, on the south side.
Okay.
I didn't go over to Evans. They will have acts, they'll have to have access to the Airbnb house for Connecticut. Haley, I think, Haley or.
Hadley, that's his last name.
And that's where we're going to have opposition if we don't have a means for him to get in and out of his driveway to the actual mill, not the B and B.
You're talking about Evans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we should try and straighten that out with him. And there's a couple of people already on the Gorge Road that are aware that, uh, they like the idea of the road being closed because then they can walk their dogs, stuff up and down like they did when it was closed before we did the maintenance work on it.
The other thing, I, there's a couple of little upgrades, uh, I don't know if I'm upgrades, but, and John said he was gonna, I can't remember the exact wording about the guardrails on the south end about possibly turning them so that when we plow snow there, we have a place to actually go off the road with it instead of have to run back, drag it out of there so we don't end up with a lot of big pile.
That sounds to me like on the final end of this project.
Well, what we'll do is, uh, you know, uh, Cash had also mentioned the idea of, do you want to put some openings or portals in there so that there's natural light inside? And if there's those types of issues that you guys would like, we just bring them up with the resident. We, you know, flush it out, see if, you know, that's what they want to do. I did go back and look at some of the other projects that we had and they did have, a lot of them do have the portal, some of them have windows. There was one lattice one that had, it was like a, it was like two foot by ten foot on either end, that was, was in there to, to put light in. So it's, it's done. It's just something you'd have to run through the state to see if they'd be amenable to it.
We've seen times people walking through there in daytime, they can't see them.
Yeah, but the downside is if the Historic Society gets involved with this, they want it to be exactly how it looked when the guy built it.
Right, right. And that goes back to the state review.
I was going to say, the state decides that.
Yeah.
I was looking, we're looking at the safety part of it, seeing somebody in the bridge. Hopefully better.
Well, if you can make that argument with the state and they agree, that's a whole, I don't, as one member, I have any problem. I mean, it makes sense to me, but, uh, I know how they work historic stuff, so.
Yeah, right.
Well, I guess my question would be, how many people have been flipped inside the bridge over the years?
I don't know.
I mean, there's been a, there, it's been near what, a couple of years now?
I know there was a discussion back like a year ago about lighting or not. And I think there was a decision of no.
The guy that built that bridge built this building.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Same, I guess roughly the same time period. But, uh, so East Street is gonna provide, or was going to be the access point for all of your materials?
East, not East Street.
From the back, from, from the backside.
Oh, okay, sorry. Now I understand.
Coming up bump road.
Yeah, I got it.
That means the heavy loads will be going up bump road, turning north onto East.
Causing all kinds of dust issues and stuff. But if you close, uh, Gorge Road, then you won't have to do that.
Exactly.
Which.
It'll give a big stage, bigger staging area and easier.
And I think it's important for us to, uh, make the public aware the fact that that's what we're considering. Whatever we decide tonight, then let's pass it on and see if we get feedback from them. Well, going on the Gorge Road from here, you go quite a ways. You don't have to go very far to get to the last house if my memory serves me correct.
Almost about three quarters of a mile.
Yeah, so that's not a big deal.
We did that one in the airport.
Yeah, when it was, had the washout.
So what it sounds like to me though is you'd like us to hold off until after your pre-construction meeting.
Right.
You'll let Cash know when that is and then we can proceed with a conversation.
Exactly.
Because the state's got to approve it anyway, so there's nothing we can do tonight. But we can at least, I, I mean, everybody can take a poll around the room and see if everybody's on board with that. But I think based on the sounds, it sounds like everybody's in favor.
Well, I personally would defer to our incredibly talented road commissioner in terms of what his recommendation is. You owe him some money, George, or something.
I wouldn't have brought it up, I didn't think it was a good idea.
I suspected as much.
Yeah, I believe we have to submit like a sketch to the state of the final detour plan, so we can show.
While you're having that discussion, if you can let them know that the select board would consider this possibility and to Rob's point, we could get everybody's opinion tonight and then. What's your feeling on this art?
As long as the residents don't care, I, I don't have an issue with it. It sounds like they don't really have too much of an issue, so that's fine. They're the ones that live there.
They enjoyed when that was closed because they were walking up and down the road like a.
I don't want to interrupt, but the blocking, the closure from before was past that Airbnb house.
Right.
Which will give them more staging area too.
But so you, we know your opinion, Rob?
Yeah, as long as we're on, on the up and up with everybody and tell them what's happening so everybody's aware. I mean, we want to make that work area as safe as possible too. And right now, I got to be honest, I'll, my wife was on me the other day because I went down through there and I forgot, it's been so long since I drove the road, I forgot about the stop sign that we added. I mean, it's just, and how many people are going to do stuff like that? And if they come, you know, I think, you know, that stop sign's relatively new as it is. I mean, it's only been there a year, we put it in when we reopened, year and a half, two years, so.
The stop ahead side's been all shot up.
Yeah, so I mean, the reality is, I think, whatever, whatever we can do to make it safer, let's, let's do it to make sure it's a safe work environment, so.
And probably on a traffic count, probably ninety, the ninety-three percent of the traffic is out of town, cross traffic.
Yeah, it's cross traffic. Which they're going to have to go another two miles and go around it.
Um, what's your opinion? Fine. All right, so I think what we want to do though is maybe get onto the website, town site and put a thing, the possibility of the, the road being closed while construction, um, takes place.
The notice that it's being considered?
Yeah, yeah.
When is your site meeting? That must be coming right up.
It's got to be, I, I, everybody's off today, I think, so.
You're looking at opening it up, start doing stuff about it.
May one. So it's got to be in the next two weeks.
Yeah, so let's pursue that. Maybe we could do that, Gloria, if you don't mind.
Well, I for one want to say thank you for stopping in, being here and appreciate and looking forward to what the finished product's going to look like and safe travels back to Albany tonight.
Now, do you, are you guys do the permit, will that, there's the cor, River Corridor permit?
That's the BZI. They're meeting the seventeenth.
I was going to say, it's not us, right?
Oh, that's the zoning.
Zoning, right.
Okay, should I come back for that as well?
Um, you're welcome to. I can send you the agenda.
Yeah, if you could do that, then I'll plan on coming back for that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, all set?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Sure. Quick question, how did you manage to have a nice sunny afternoon so you could talk your wife into coming?
It's because she came with me that it's sunny. Otherwise, it wouldn't have been.
He's learning over thirty-five years.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. And we did discuss that traffic plan, um, that's associated with this bridge, right?
Uh, Mr., yeah, we're all set on the bridge.
Yeah, so transfer station.
Next thing I have, the transfer station. We talked about putting up a chain link fence, almost like that dog cage that we have for the food waste. And I was over there, Capriisco. We have a old recycling bin that's totally enclosed.
Yep.
Why can't, I'd like to know if the select board would go along with it, move it over by the cardboard bin, have the food recycling bins inside of that. They open up the big door. People put stuff in there.
Why not?
Um, that'd save us.
It's going to save us a huge amount of time, uh, amount of stuff.
And it's safe. There's no way a bear can get into it.
No, and I think one of the, for positioning it though, I would check with Horst.
I've already talked to Horst.
And make sure that he.
We had to brainstorm a couple of locations.
Okay.
And he said, my first one was up there where it'd be an iso and middle circle, which would be handier for people, but we decided we'd put it, if we did do it, put it over the cardboard bin against that woods.
Well, I think that would be better in the summertime because it's, it's not as pleasant.
I don't think we need a motion. I'd say do it.
I just want to let you know.
Yep, let's go for it, yeah.
All right, structures grant application.
Looks pretty self-explanatory. I've already read it over. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize, uh, the application for the tier road structures grant and. Yeah, it looks like you just need approval. You don't need, so just a motion to approve, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Looks like unanimous.
Yep.
Uh, thanks, guys.
Furthermore, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve as we've had it on, I think, at least two different times about this tier road survey.
I think I can signature as well on the one copy.
Yeah.
Make a motion that the board chairman sign that on behalf of the board and we approve the tier road survey.
Absolutely.
Would you like me to send letters to property owners?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make, I'll amend my motion to include that, that a letter goes out to property owners stating that the town will be conducting a survey.
And I'll agree to second it too. All right, you first.
And I would add that we have the, we pay for the MyLine too.
Yes, yep.
Twenty-three ninety-five.
Okay, this year, yep.
All right. No further discussion. I would, uh, ask for a vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Um, select board, Barnes, floating, drifting, oh, down by yard, they're all signed.
Did you get them signed?
Yeah. Yes. Is there anybody that wants to speak?
I, I do, yeah. I have a question and some concerns.
So you stick your name for it?
Oh, Sarah Coombe, my name's Katie Ravan. I'm over in Clarendon on seven, three and one O B on Pierce's Corner, I recently bought. So concerns are, what are we going to do about the crime that's increasing in the area? Yesterday I found all my kids were playing out front. I had a huge community, Easter egg hunted my property and they were all playing and I wasn't paying attention. And one of the parents walked out and there's hypodermic needles used on my property, being thrown on my property. It was the same night that catalytic converters are being stolen from East Clarendon and people are breaking in. I've noticed numerous people doing what appear to be drug deals on the pull-up on my property. It's really concerning to me. And then today I had two very aggressive hitchhikers who were screaming and making a scene with my children. So I moved them to the back and tried to get them away. The sheriff was sitting there watching the entire thing and I'm like, seriously? And just drove off. And it's getting ridiculous. And I'm thinking if we don't, I don't know what's been addressed or how it can be addressed or if we can get somebody in the area who actually, I've had to call, I've had numerous break-ins during mid daylight on my property. I've called and everyone's like, I called the police station, I like call somebody else. I called the sheriffs, call somebody else. And I'm trying to get these people off my property with my children. And I don't know, it's getting really frustrating. And then also I'm trying to start a business, so I want to be very welcoming to the community, which is really important to me. And all of a sudden I'm going to have to put up cameras and signs that say no trespassing everywhere. And I'm looking at blocking off the turnout because there's been drug usages and things going on. So I'm just hoping that we can preemptively start to address it.
What's the location again?
I'm right on seven B and one O three, old Pierce's Corner, where the fruit stand is.
Okay.
There's people walking on my property day and night. You know, when it's coming to help when I'm calling. I recently had to get a gun, which is not something I really want to do, but like, I don't know what else to do at this point.
Well, um, speaks to my concern that what I was going to bring up later on is because I had a bad experience on the middle road about a week and a half ago. And it's going on through here too. So, um, and short of, we have the contract with the sheriff's department and I would say the addition that we have for Sarah's property is we should be making the state police aware. And I think coming from you or whoever would probably hold some more weight if it comes from the select board level, um, because that's a state highway. So that's going to add, actually both of those are state highways because seven B is still a state highway too.
Yes, it is.
So that should hopefully get some more attention from the state police.
And people are doing sixty down that road. I literally had, not an exaggeration, my neighbor saw me jump. I almost got hit by a woman who pulled out into the grass. They're going so fast. I've already talked to all the neighbors who are willing to do whatever we need to do because they're like, we can't even walk our animals, our kids can't walk near the road. It's, it's so bad.
I know North Clarendon got hit two days ago up by you. I had somebody reach out and let me know, pointing at Bob, just so everybody knows. Um, I know North Clarendon got hit two days ago, and that's been, I've been made aware that that's not out of the ordinary. It's been happening more and more lately, um, a- and I don't know, I, I, I don't know what the answer is. Um, because unfortunately, our state's attorney and district attorney have made the decision that we're basically on catch and release. So, there's nothing, they, they pick them up and they're out by dinner time. I mean, that's what's going on, so I don't, I don't know, I don't know ultimately, townwide, we can increase our complaint level and we can increase that, but until the court system actually has some teeth to it, there's nothing that's gonna change because they can get right back out.
Now, did you talk to, to the sheriff's department and the state police?
Yeah, I called, the first time I called three different places. And then I've called, yeah, everyone's just like, no, we can't help you, we have nobody, help them, call them, call this number, so I don't even know how many I called. I called Rutland Police, I, you know, I called two different sheriff's departments, I.
See, that's another issue with stopping.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the big issues, I mean, the city won't come out to Clarendon anyway, so the city, the city's not gonna be a call, but between the state and the
Sheriff.
Sheriff's, unless it's, unless it's after they're off, 'cause they go off partway through, too. So, that's, that's, the last I knew, the sheriff.
What's the usual hours that people?
Both of them still go off at a certain time of night.
It goes on all, so, all hours of the day, there's people parking there doing weird things, I, and I pass the money.
Parking there, you mean like where that little fruits, uh, vegetable stand?
Yes, they, they, out to my pole out, I've had people walking in my buildings, I've walked up and found people drinking in my buildings. I've had my car broken into twice, I've had all of my tools stolen, I've had men come up my trailer who were clearly very, very high. Luckily, my son was there at the time, he no longer, he moved to Maine, so no longer lives there. I've had everything broken into, people challenging, people doing drugs, now there's needles on the edge of my property, so at night, they must be using my dog bar, I can hear people walking on the property at night, and I, there's nobody I can call.
Now, um, let's, tomorrow Katie, let's get in touch with the state police. And those needles and stuff are still laying there, right?
No, my neighbors, so we had all the kid, one of the dads put it in wood and then put it inside a bottle and put it in the, 'cause the kids were all around, we didn't know what to do.
Well, I wanted to find out if we could get fingerprints off it.
It's in the bottle and it was never touched by us, 'cause we were concerned, and it's, it should still be in my garbage, and the.
They won't even.
They won't touch that, they won't touch that.
Even if they found a fingerprint.
I can't tell you how many ti- I can't tell you how many times we've called for needles on the school property. It's over and over, I mean, it's just.
Well, if we, if we don't make the, uh, attempt to raise a little hell.
No, that's why I'm saying, I would definitely, from our level, so you're stepping it up a level, you've gotta make the sheriffs and the state police aware. All I'm saying is, we have to understand, it's not, unfortunately, it's not the police's fault that this is perpetuating. That's, that's the issue, the issue is not, the poli- the police truly are doing their jobs. And that, I mean, you have that one experience, I would make David Fox aware of the one experience where you're saying the sheriff was right there and didn't do anything, I would definitely.
Today, yeah.
I would definitely pass that along, if you can pinpoint a time and say when it, where, and if it was today, that she can pass that along, that, that is something David Fox is gonna wanna know. If the, I mean, if that, that's something we pass along and say, there was a domestic issue going on right then and there, and it was totally overlooked and, and gone, that needs to go straight to the sheriff. But, what I'm saying is, the bulk of what's going on is a court system issue, that's, that's the problem.
So, I'm wondering a couple of things, I mean, surely as a state, we can band together and challenge what the court's doing, 'cause it is a democracy, right, or should be. And secondly, I used to, in my old community, I was really, I spoke on child sexual abuse prevention, and ninety percent of it is prevented when the community bonds together and they know it's not a green community. So, on a community level, we're gonna have to get creative, but there's something we can do to communicate, crime is not acceptable in the area, and we're gonna, you know, do something, but it doesn't have to be aggressive. But at least they know, so maybe some of us can get creative, parents, I don't know, start bringing in some ideas.
Bob, just shifting subject for a second, whatever happened, because four years ago, North Clarendon tried to get the neighborhood watch back going.
Yeah, tried to get it going.
What happened, is it, is there still a group of them that are still trying to do it or not, because that might be.
Dave, Dave Murray was the one who was trying to do it at the time.
Along with, um, Hetzel, Mr. Hetzel too, right?
Yeah.
Art, Art was involved.
Yeah, yeah, Art, yeah, there was a meeting of Art and, uh, well, the bear boy and.
Cause a few of us slum board members got, went to that meeting.
Myself and, uh, and it never really got off the ground, things settled down. And then it just kinda.
Fizzled out.
Yeah.
Okay, because, I mean, I, I'll tell you, when people are active like that, and are involved with, whether it's neighborhood watch or whatever, um, that's certainly a, a path to go as well. And again, it's, it escalates things, but not terribly far.
Word gets around.
Word gets around, oh, there's.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, if we just get the word of that, sometimes enough.
And I think, even at that point, they were gonna take shifts, basically, over nights and to watch the village. They were gonna, a- and basically, they had a group of citizens that were going to start doing that.
Doing on their own, yeah.
Well, this is on Peg TV, this meeting, this discussion we're having right now. So, I'm wondering that we can get the Rutland Herald, uh, to write an article about this actual discussion, put that in a newspaper, but then all of a sudden, uh, really push the state police especially.
That's a good idea.
To get over there and, so if we start getting it out more in the public, these guys who are pulling this crap are gonna.
Well, and again, it's, it's, it's not gonna stop, I don't think, but a- anything is gonna be a, hopefully, more of a deterrent.
Right.
And, the reality is that I never, I mean, we've had late night through here, but nothing like what I experienced two weeks ago. And you want your skin to crawl, have something like, I mean, it's just, it's, there's a lot going on.
What hap?
I had somebody, I was pumping sap at two thirty in the morning, and I had somebody come up behind me, and we've had a slew of issues through here as well.
When, when the, when the state is putting all those people up in the hotels over there in Rutland, that ain't, that's not a very far walk from there to here. And I mean, they're destroying those hotels, they're destroying our, our, um, our whole visitors coming to this state. Who, where, if somebody, if a friend of mine wants to come to this state, where can they stay? There's not a hotel in Rutland that I would recommend they would stay.
There's one hotel, I had a business gr- group come into the school last week, and you have to go up towards Mendon, that's the only place that I could put them up, that I felt safe. That I could put them up somewhere where there wasn't gonna be a problem, it was not in Rutland, it was outside the city.
Tourism's gonna go to hell, nobody wants to come to this state, 'cause there's no place for anybody to stay that's safe. It's horrible.
And, I mean, th- th- before, I know it was election season, and I, I will straight up say that I've not met the new mayor yet, so I don't know where things are headed right now. I'm gonna go in and meet him hopefully this week, but, um, for other aspects of my life, but, um, you know, right before the elections, I can tell you Dave Valera was up in Montpelier, meeting with the whole delegation, telling them about the crime problems that Rutland was experiencing. And he was speaking more to Rutland County, not just Rutland City, and the fact that we are all experiencing it down here. And, as far as I can tell, based on where the legislature's at right now and the trajectory that they're on, with the bills that are currently proposed and the bills that are out there, it fell on deaf ears. Cause there's really nothing for bills that came out of this session to address any of it.
As long as, uh, that isn't interfering with the life up by Montpelier and Burlington.
Well.
They don't care what the hell goes on.
The old, that's the, that's the age-old saying, right?
Yeah.
But, I mean, if anything, there was something that I saw come across, that there was something on essentially to decriminalize another level of something, so they said if anything, it's probably gonna aid to things even potentially getting worse, because it, it took another teeth out of one of the laws that already existed.
I can't understand why they're doing these things.
Do you really try to use that space where people are pulling in for any purpose?
I will be, yeah, I'm just getting ready to open the fruit stand. And then I, yeah, I have the little store up top, which will be open this, everything will be open this year. And again, I wanted to keep, I moved here and I knew I'm about to stay and wanted to be really welcoming, so I wasn't gonna put anything. People have been parking there, pulling out for years, and wanted to keep it that way, I talked to a lot of people that are great, but now the crime just seems to be really increasing and getting dangerous, you know? And I have kids, they're all, it's like the hub for all the neighborhood kids to come, it's getting more and more dangerous out there, so it's, I, now I'm gonna just rope it off. Honestly, I don't know what else to do, I'm trying to communicate, don't park there.
If you rope it off, then you won't be able to have customers stopping.
That's what I'm saying, I, I think I'm gonna have to, I'll rope it and then take it down, like when it's open, when we're standing there watching it. And I hate to do stuff like cameras and stuff, but I feel like I have to at this point, I don't know.
So, we'll try and make an effort here tomorrow, to get the state up there, and are you usually on the property?
I am, yeah.
Good, because then if we can get somebody to come down here, maybe one of us can go with that individual from the state police and go over there and have a discussion. Huh?
A billboard, saying, smile, you're on camera.
I know, that's what I thought, yeah, I'm gonna go get signs and everything, I went today, went to two stores and they were out.
They all got the little ones.
Yeah, I hate what that communi- I mean, yeah, I hate having to do that around here.
Um, would you, would you, m- my experience would be, all of a sudden you'll see bullet holes in all those signs.
The first thing though, I agree, and, and this is what I've been, had reiterated to me over and over again, is just keep on making the authorities aware. Like, if something happens tomorrow, you call them again tomorrow, you say, hey, this is, this is, you know, I found more needles again today, or, like, you unfortunately, you just gotta keep.
Squeaky wheel.
You gotta keep it going.
See, that happens all the time, for a while anyway, over here to the gorge. And then when all of a sudden, the, the state police started showing up over there, and then the sheriff started showing up, periodically they park where all the cars are parked and stuff like this, and all of a sudden that kinda calmed down, it's, when Dave was still alive, he was he, remember he told us soon as the police started showing up over there, a lot of that stuff knocked off.
Yeah, it cleared out quite a lot.
And maybe, I mean, I don't know, Art Hetzel, and maybe some of those are something to connect with in the village, to see if there is any more push to try and get something going again.
Yeah, well, we'll talk around a little bit and see who's interested.
Cause it wouldn't hurt anything.
Right, not gonna hurt ass.
I tell you, there's a group of citizens in the city that have gone to that, that's Rutland City Patrol, what they're calling it. And they're taking shifts and they're patrolling the city to help, just help, just to be another set of eyes, because it's going on everywhere.
Have you talked with the folks that have the driving range and the monument place there?
I have, I'm really good friends with Hank, yes, and I just went to talk to my neighbors, 'cause there was another guy wandering, and we decided to just start, if we don't know him and they don't live there, we're getting aggressive, yeah, not like aggressive attacking, but like, you have no right to be here if you don't live on the street, we don't want you on the street. So, yeah, one of my neighbors had just pulled a guy over who was, I don't know if he was trying to break into our places or what, he got to him before I did. So, yes, we've all started talking, and we're just gonna be very assertive with anyone walking by our properties.
Yeah. I mean, quite often I'll drive up through there when I we go to the recyclable, my wife and I, and we'll drive that way and go grab a cup of coffee somewhere and, and, you know, I'll keep my eyes open from now on.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that.
That's all we can do.
We'll get back to you though, after we try and have a conversation tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll be a longer, you know, and again, I don't wanna put it all on you guys, if we can get together as a community, I don't know how, once we decide on something, I don't mind sending out emails or getting a front porch form or whatever it is we need to do. I know, I volunteer at the school, know a lot of parents, so you know, I know that they'll probably be on the same board with cleaning this up.
Might be worth it, the type of Bob Mixby and Art Hetzel, that ones that started it before, maybe they got some of the base out, started to.
Absolutely, yeah.
Move it on.
Yeah, maybe there'll be enough renewed interest, enough people, I mean.
Bob, can she have your contact information?
Yeah, I'll see if I can get ahold of some of them and, uh, 'cause we've got, uh, we've got a couple of new neighbors in there now too.
Yeah.
That, uh, they seem kinda interested in the community.
Okay.
Well, that young couple right there in the corner.
What's that?
The young couple is right there on the corner that, uh.
Yeah.
But I think that you're right, and, and when we did that before, I don't know if, I'm trying to think how far along ago it was Gloria, but they, we let them use the community center, let them use it for their neighborhood watch meetings, like, we just.
Right.
As long as it wasn't booked for something else, we at the time said, 'cause it was a con- it was a citizen-run thing.
Yeah.
The slum board obviously, we, we really weren't, they had their own leadership, they had their own, it was a citizen organized
Right.
structure, and we let them use the community center for their meetings upstairs.
For their meetings and, and informational stuff and so on, yeah.
Which I, I for one have no problem with that, that if they, if there's a group of citizens that wanna get active again, let them use the community center, that's why it's there.
Let me ask around a little, maybe we can get, uh, somebody from the sheriff's department to come down and talk with the people.
Sure.
You know?
Go over what can and can't, you know, what can you do, what can't you do as a citizen, you know, I mean, that's, that's a big thing too.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt, that's for sure.
Alright, well, get by, Katie, you have her contact information, okay, so let's see what we can do.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, any other public comments?
Just, just a quick question, going back to closing the gorge road. I'm assuming that you will close it on this end, right here at seven B?
No.
Oh, up, up.
There'll be signs.
Signs there, but.
But the barriers won't be up till past the last house.
Yeah, that's not the barriers up, because that turns into a dead-end road, you know what's gonna happen there this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what we, uh.
And I, I was kinda wondering if maybe you should just, mark it here as closed and then the barricade up beyond the Hance House.
That's what he's talking.
That's what you're planning to do.
That's what we did last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Road closed.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, so, somebody, a stranger looking at GPS, all of a sudden, hey, the road's closed, I can't go through there. You know, and realize.
A D to our sign, head up, shovel them up, room seven B.
Yeah.
Or down on room seven.
Okay, that's all I gotta thank you.
Okay, uh.
You put a, one of those, submit, what do you call them?
Jersey barriers.
There you go, yeah.
I guess, we bought six last time.
Alright, old, old business, purchasing policy draft.
Chairman, I looked it over and I think it looks pretty good.
I would agree, I just went, went through it again just before the meeting and I got here early, I think they did a nice.
I think it looks very good, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I would su- second that.
Um, I believe there's a spot for all your signatures.
Yep.
I have, um.
All the signatures?
Yeah, on the last page.
Oh, okay, because I have a last page, last page.
Well, yeah, it's.
Those are all the Jack ones, this is the official.
It's this page, second to the.
That's the official one?
Yeah.
Second to the last page, we gotta sign it.
Also, wondered if you want me to have employees sign off on it?
Any employee that does purchasing, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Committees too, or?
Yeah, anybody, I mean, Gloria does purchasing, whatever, I mean, anybody, I would say, anybody, anybody, yeah, rec committee, anybody who does purchasing, I would say should.
Sign.
That they're aware of it.
Yeah.
That they receive one.
Who seconded the approval?
George.
Alright, there's been a motion made, been seconded, we've had some brief discussion. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Really?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm gonna sit down this way first. That was good, good job on that, by the way, new business, road commissioner reappointment.
What, we're gonna have to put up with him some more? I think we need to do that.
Does he wanna be reappointed, is that a better question?
That was my next question.
I did receive an email that he would like to be reappointed.
You did, okay.
For the record though.
You're a glutton for punishment, is that what you're saying?
For the record. For the record, uh, you want us to consider you?
Consider me for reappointment.
Okay, then.
You have an experience.
I don't have no experience at all.
There you go.
I would entertain a, a motion.
Also move it.
Second.
And is it for a three-year term?
Yes, and I would make it end in April, or in May, March, so that we, we can do them all in March instead of having to push it until April.
I'll, I'll, I'll agree to that amendment to my motion, that we're gonna adjust it so that it's three years, but it comes up with the others in March.
Maybe I'll do it like fiscal year.
Yes, it'd be March of twenty-six. So, it's not quite three years, Cash, be just shy of three years.
George, you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, Katie, you have all that information?
Um, who seconded that?
George.
I did.
All those, good idea, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Um, state opioids settlement discussion, I have no idea with this.
I say we leave it alone, let the state do with it, 'cause we have no, we have no use for it.
Here, Mike.
Not a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Yes, I do.
I believe. I believe, I mean-
So basically, our little five hundred portion will go to the state's abatement fund to deal with.
Yeah.
If they make out, you're gonna make out anyway, because they're gonna divide it among everybody anyway.
Yeah.
The way I take it.
Well, then we'd have to have an actual use for it.
Yeah.
An opioid use for it, which we have no, we have no ability to use it.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, no, I, I agree with you.
So we'll stick with what the state-
Whatever the state does, yeah.
Okay. Move right along with that.
You gotta call the motion. It's made and seconded.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thinking football. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Right.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Gloria, I take it this is in order. The next Stonehedge is in order.
Yes. It's in the folder and the check-
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve, reapprove Stonehedge liquor license as we have multiple times.
Second. All right, who signs it, the whole?
You don't anymore.
Oh, okay.
Just approve it.
Uh, there's been a motion, motion made, seconded, all of them in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, uh, Heidi's not here. Uh, Gloria, do you, would you like to give any kinda report?
No, thank you.
Kevin?
Just listening.
Okay. Oh, what's her name?
Wow. Um, I just, I'm announcing that Green Up Day is Saturday, May sixth. So greenup bags are here, they're for free. Um, anyone can come and grab them. And I've ordered a dumpster for the town for the week previous and week after.
You still have a roll up dump bag, like you did some- That's what she said. Oh, I, I didn't hear it, I guess.
Didn't we used to have to approve like an expenditure to them, like a donation once a year or something? Or is that, is that just automatic now or?
I think it's in the budget.
Yeah.
It's a line item in the budget.
It's a line item, so it's approved and we just do it? Okay.
It's a hundred and fifty bucks.
Just making sure.
How do we get charged off for that? We said a hundred and fifty?
I think it's a line item in the budget.
There's, it's, it's to actually go into the Green Up Day state fund thing.
Okay, so-
But we pay for the dumpster out of-
Are you transfer station?
The town, whatever.
The contents, uh, ends up in it. We don't have to pay for that, that's all built in?
Oh, no, we pay-
That's what I, that's what I'm asking.
We, we pay for the disposal.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, no, the hundred dollars that I'm thinking of goes into their fund, which pays for printing of the bags and whatever.
I got posters and-
Yeah. They just cover their expenses by doing that.
And last year, the biggest expense was tires.
Oh, I believe it.
Katie's done with a fall off on the-
On tires?
No.
Oh, oh. Um, I'll also say, um, the state's trying to get better about like tracking how many volunteers we have, how many miles are cleaned, stuff like that. So I'm gonna put up posts around town, um, and maybe on the Clarendon Community Facebook page and hopefully get some feedback, but.
Yep.
Do you have anything else, Katie?
That's all.
Cass, do you have any concerns?
Fall off with Katie's because of the hundred and thirty tires showed up that you counted?
Yeah.
Dump back. I tried to figure out a different location of that dumpster and not have it down around back of the building.
Yeah, because it was in-
Better if it was exposed.
Up here, by the, for the sand pile?
Gonna be there for two weeks, so you gotta be-
Sure, too.
Yeah. I ordered it today.
How about where you guys park your-
Thing is, you can't dump into sideways when we go around and pick all the trash up out of the trucks. Because a lot of times we have to throw it, some of that stuff, we can't get into that dumpster. We have to throw it alone and then dump it in the dumpster.
How about parking, where you guys park your vehicles?
Thinking.
On that side.
On that side.
Why not?
Because all of a sudden, we come back to work that Monday and there's a hundred, you counted them, hundred and thirty tires or something like that.
Something to be taken.
They're all stacked up nicely.
I'll tell you, all over South Creek Road, Cross Road, there's tires everywhere.
Yeah, again.
Again, there's tires everywhere.
And these aren't tires that we picked up. These are tires that showed up.
That showed up. But I'll tell you right now, there's, there's quite a few on the side of the road that I'm seeing.
I know there is, yeah.
How about up on Cordline though?
I haven't seen as many as when they passed years. I mean, quite often you'll see a lot of furniture, refrigerators and whatever.
Yeah.
Don't remind them, George, you're on Peg TV. That's true.
South Creek Road's pretty rough, again. I'll tell you that.
Especially down to the sou- southern end, where they pull off this-
They're throwing where my sap tanks are.
Yeah.
They're throwing bags there.
I don't know what the hell is wrong with people.
Well-
Uh, do you have anything else, Cass?
That's all I have is location and that's the only-
That works.
Place, that way you can see it from the road.
You can see it.
So Cass, do you, uh-
Maybe I might get a couple of them smiling on camera signs.
Mm-hmm.
That wouldn't hurt, that'd happen down there anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have cameras.
So when that dumpster's gonna come down, you, you have to coordinate with the guy driving it?
We'll move it.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
It's okay.
Bob, uh, Bob.
I'm, 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 Bob's not, I'm, Bob's over there. He used to be here.
Bob who? George, go ahead.
I'm all set for tonight, sir.
Me too. Rob?
I already tied mine and Lucero's, so I'm good.
I'm good.
I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, sir.
All of in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?